Fudge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 25th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. That we will go on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from August 18th, 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $536,140.30. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
There a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
No, I'm sure.
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include $171,000 for 911 and $48,000 for a jail DVR. And there are five bills for coroner transport of $300 each. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second on bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is register of deeds, monthly reports of fees collected for 2015, and that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A, consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Are there any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special commission action to extend a 5% temporary additional pay duty for Darlene Johnson, Assistant County Auditor, in the auditor's office until December 18th, 2015. Carrie?
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This is a request to extend a 10% temporary additional duty pay increase you awarded to Darlene Johnson in February. There are some additional training responsibilities she'll be having through the end of the year. Bob, let's attach to memo for you outlining some of those in case you have questions. I'd be happy to try and answer anything you would have today.
Are there any questions for Carrie on this? Is there a motion?
A move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Carrie. Item number six is application for abatement, and there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from Del Rapids Township for the following new speed limits posted posting notifications. Number one, on 474th Avenue from 15th to 145th, extending west for the distance of 1,600 -- whoops, got that wrong -- 1,670 feet. Number two, on 476th Avenue from 15th to 145th, extending west for the distance of 2,600 feet. On 475th Avenue from Highway 115, extending west for a distance of 600 feet. On Garfield Avenue from Highway 115, extending north for a distance of 3,760 feet. Excuse me. Item number eight is a planning and notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It's DPNO 82777 and the amount of $6,179.16. We got the application for the compromise on this. It was submitted on behalf of the person involved by his guardian and conservator. Application request compromise in full without payment. The conservator guardian detailed some of the problems that the party has had. He had medical expenses of $5,800 with a broken wrist while unemployed and uninsured. Following that incident, the applicant made consistent $50 a month payments for about a year. At that point, he started having unusual and dangerous behavior, including traffic tickets, assault charges. And these are reflected in the additional liens for public defender services. In August of 2014, the party's siblings who live out of state were contacted and urged to visit. And that led to involuntary commitment to HSE where he's treated for mental illness and dementia. He was discharged to assisted living center in Sioux Falls where he continues to reside. One of the conditions of discharge is that a legal guardian conservator must be in place. The applicant has no ability to work and does not -- and the few resources he has will be exhausted shortly, at which time he'll qualify for state assistance for his assisted living care. He has several checking accounts and an IRA with a combined value of $7,500. His lien balance to Minnehaha County is his only listed debt. So that's the situation. And, you know, on the one hand, we don't dun people for the money that they owe us. You know, we're not sending it to someone to knock on your door. But on the other hand, it appears that this will never be paid off. And certainly, the assets that the applicant and his guardian have are insufficient to really continue very long. I really don't have an opinion on this. I -- you know, on the one hand, we could just leave it and it would never gain interest or it would never be paid off. On the other hand, we could forgive it. I know that -- I did talk to someone who knows the applicant. Says he's had real trouble. So it looks pretty dismal. I guess I'll throw it up for consideration.
Another point to make on that is that he did make $50 payments a month until his mental status deteriorated significantly. So he had been paying on this lien up until life fell apart.
And we always like that.
Comments from the commission? I guess I could ask if the representative for this lien are here, is here?
They're not.
Okay. So, commission consideration.
Well, Madam Chair, in the absence of someone else commenting, I'll make a motion to discharge this lien.
I have a motion to discharge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Comments from the commission?
Commissioner Heiberg.
Commissioner Bender.
My only comment would be that there's no prospect that this is ever going to be repaid, and I don't see any reason that we would leave it on our books when it's quite clear that there won't be the ability to repay. I am appreciative that the applicant did make regular payments while he was mentally able to do so. But at this point, I don't really see that it's beneficial to anybody to leave it on the books.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bennigan.
I think I would agree with Commissioner Bender with the gentleman's medical issues. He's never going to be able to go back to work. And frankly, the permanent disability that he has is not going to go away. And fortunately, we just carry these on the books forever, so there's a cost of us to keep track of all of this stuff. And then eventually, we write it off anyhow based on lack of payment or frankly, the values. And I don't believe we'll ever see anything on this one. So I think it's just a futile thing to leave it on his record for a guardian to keep track of, if you will.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to discharge the lien. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is opportunity for public comment if there's anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda for today. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on with regular business. At 9:00 AM, so we will adjourn as the Minnehaha County Commission and convene in a joint meeting with Del Rapids City Council for the intent of convening as the Minnehaha County Commission alone with the rest of the regular meeting after the adjournment of the joint meeting. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting and we will go into a joint meeting with Minnehaha County. And I would recognize that there is a quorum present of the Minnehaha County Commission. I need a roll call from the Del Rapids. Roll call from Del --
Hello, Niles.
Mike Gertz.
Gary Park.
Okay. We've recognized that there is a quorum on the Del Rapids side. I would look for a motion from the county to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. A motion from the city of Del Rapids to approve the agenda. A motion and a second from the city of Del Rapids. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item is deferred from July 21st, 2015, is a public hearing of the Minnehaha County Commission and the Del Rapids City Council to consider ordinance MC 28-01, amending the 2001 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Del Rapids as follows. C Commercial District to the RR1 Rural Resident District on property legally described as Lot 1 of Overvogue, Track 2, Southwest 1 Quarter, Sections 8, Township 104, North Range 49 West. Minnehaha County is hereby rezoned from C Commercial District to RR1 Rural Residence District, and the official zoning map referred to in Article 2.03A is amended to include the property in the RR-1 Rural Residence District. David Heinhold. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioner. David Heinhold, Planning Department. The applicant -- hold on one second.
And just for clarification, we will just do a review and then pretty much if there is any new information, so that we don't repeat everything we did two weeks ago.
Okay. So as you know, this item was deferred from the last meeting, July 21st, is to rezone a parcel of land that's just a half mile west of Del Rapids to -- from the C Commercial District to the Rural Residential 1 District, as you see in this map right here, to allow the applicant to meet with the necessary parties and discuss the proposed rezoning with the city of Del Rapids. Ready with your link, the map, copy of the minutes, and the other information that was from the last planning commission meeting and their recommendation to approve the rezoning on both the city and the county side. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, then I can go through some of the pictures that I took. May remember them from last time. This is looking towards the property right there. This is where that existing commercial business is right there. And then this is right along that eastern -- westernmost road where that business is. Again, that's the same road. This is the site of where the proposed rezoning would be, looking from that commercial property on the west side. And then, again, looking at the site. As you can see, it's in a cornfield right now, and some residences in the background, the existing Rural Residential 5 District to the east. And then this is the driveway off Highway 115. And then there's the business right there. That's the existing commercial lot. Highway 115, looking east, and looking west, and then looking back at the site. And then that's all the pictures that I have. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David this morning? Okay. This is a public hearing, and like I said, we will just take new information. Is there anyone in favor of this project that would like to speak? Just identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Jim Billion. I'm an attorney for the applicant, Daniel Witty. My business address is 3409 West 47th Street, number 104, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57106.
Thank you.
And I'm here this morning on his behalf, as I indicated, and thank you, everyone, for coming. It's not my intent to cause any type of further delay. I know that these things are a little bit unique due to the concurrent jurisdiction over the interests that's applied for. And there has been some discussion with the city regarding a waiver of right to protest annexation. And Daniel hasn't executed that document yet due to some concerns he has regarding utility assessments and what his contributions might be there. I'm hopeful that we would still be able to reach an agreement. I provided -- I did receive a proposed waiver of protest annexation from Dean Hammer, the city attorney for the city of Del Rapids, and I've also prepared one on my own that I know Daniel is comfortable with. I don't believe that the city council has had time to collectively discuss that or review it. I think this is a good project or a good proposal in a number of respects in that this particular piece of property is uniquely situated at that intersection. I believe the city had some concerns that the other areas in the Overvogue tract, who are Rural Residential 5, would see this as a precedent where they could subdivide their lots. We're going from or seeking to go from commercial, as you know, to RR1. So I think that's an important distinction there. I don't want to start this whole process all over if the city is inclined just to deny the applicant's position on it. There had been dialogue with both Dean Hammer and Justin Wyland with the city, but of course, they're not city council members, and they can't commit the city to voting one way or the other. If we were to have to start over, I think that would be inconvenient for everybody. I know that these types of meetings don't happen that often, but we would have to come down here again probably several times, come six months or shortly thereafter. So I was hoping, and I wasn't aware that no further discussion was really going to be had on this, but I was hoping that if the city had comments that they wanted to make or questions of me before taking a position to vote against the rezoning, that rather than reject that, we could defer once again. Because again, I was a little late to these proceedings, and I need to be able to comfortably advise my client on what all this means for him with the proposed waiver. So those are really the things I wanted to mention here today before the joint boards. And just kind of what you hear from the city then.
Okay. Are there any other opponents that want to speak? Proponents, city council? Comments from you? Questions for the proponents? Nothing on the city council side? Okay. I would look for a motion on or comments or questions on the county side. Commissioner Bennigan.
Mr. Billion, you discussed or mentioned the fact that there's a concern or an issue from the applicant about a utility-related issue. Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Could you explain that just a little bit, please?
Yes. As part of the proposed waiver of protest of annexation, the city had included in their waiver language that Mr. Witty would be responsible for all costs associated with utilities, water and sewer, that type of thing. And I know they can't predict when that would occur, but his concerns there are threefold, that we don't know what area would be served when this would occur. We don't know how far the spur for these utilities would need to travel and therefore the cost. And if it happens well in the future, you know, the costs are going to be presumably greater than they would be now. So if we were to sign that waiver as it was drafted by Mr. Hammer, he's got a lot of uncertainty there as to when and what those costs would be because we don't know how those utilities would be developed exactly or when. So I think if we are able to nail that down a little better that it's going to occur, you know, as historically has happened, or, you know, reasonable and customary with these types of developments, that might give him a little more assurance. The other thing that he had concerns with is that he initially had requested the waiver of protest of annexation just for the proposed RR1 area, and it had come back to him as a waiver for both the remaining commercial portion and the RR1. So that was still unsettled as well.
I understand his concern. I understand the city's concern about future costs, but if this is deferred again, is there a potential, possibility of this being agreed upon at some point?
I remain hopeful that there's a very good possibility of that. I don't plan on coming back and asking for another deferral.
Well, I will suggest we make one more deferral to try to come to an agreement, and frankly, I hope that that can happen. I understand both sides' concerns, but I think by just denying it, it just starts the whole process over, and that's not going to be successful either. So I'll make a deferral for six weeks. Does that give you enough time or two?
That should be plenty of time.
A month?
A month should be plenty of time as well.
We'll make a motion to defer this for one month.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to defer for one month. Can we have a look at the date? Because I know I'm going to be gone, and it would be nice if we'd have all the commission present when we pick a date. Do we want --
September 29th would be --
I will be gone.
Oh, you'll be gone.
Can we do it the first week in October? Is that permissible with that motion?
Just make a substitute motion. And if you've got a specific date in mind, I'd advise.
I will make a substitute motion to defer this until October 6th.
A second that. I have a motion and a second to defer till October 6th. Any other comments from the commission?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear from the Del Rapids Council on what they think about deferring and what the date should be.
Before we finish our motion? Do we want to finish our motion and then see what they say?
Well, we have our motion. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote until I know what they think.
Okay. Del Rapids -- we have a motion and a second on the table to defer until October 6th. Discussion from Del Rapids.
Good morning. I'm David Summerfeld. I'm on the council. We have deferred this now for the second time, if you're talking about. And it seems like we cannot come to an conclusion. Now they come back with one thing to us and from before and stuff, and ours has not really changed. And I don't see in the foreseeable future that our -- that we will change the way we have ours, the way Mr. Hammer has written it up for the city. So I don't know, deferring if that would make any difference, but if they can consider that ours will be, that they will agree to how we have it, annexation with the costs to the whole area, because if we want to start this process in that area, there's quite a few other properties that also could, in the future, split off into one acre pack, you know, from their five acres to one acre. And if we don't put it here, that all of this area would be have to pay some of the costs of the installation of sewer and water and amenities, you might say, that has to go along with it. We might have problems with the future sites that are not asking for annexation or splitting off into one acres at this time. So unless they -- Mr. Billion can say that he's pretty sure that maybe his people will come to do it, say that -- or wits, I should say, will change their mind or will really sit down and negotiate with us on this, I don't know if a deferral will be any good.
If it dies here, it can come back in six months anyway. So we can either do it in six weeks or we can do it in six months.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to state the city's proposal for that. Thank you.
Yeah. Is there anybody else in the opponents that want to speak from the city council?
Mary Clockman, city council. I just want to say I'm extremely disappointed that we didn't come to an agreement before this meeting. I am willing to defer it because I do believe that the petitioner will come back six months from now. I am unsure of how the rest of the council feels about it, but I would like to come to an agreement sooner rather than later.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the city council of Del Rapids? Okay. I have a motion and a second from the county to defer until October 6th. Commissioner Barth?
I'd just ask a question of Commissioner Bennigan. I mean, isn't it often the case where annexed areas contribute to the cost of extending facilities to their acreages?
There definitely is. I think what I heard Mr. Billion say is that they wanted an estimate of what those costs could potentially be. And I understand growth costs money, and if you're going to be progressive and you want to expand your community, that's going to have to -- that conversation's going to have to happen. So what I think I was hearing was the fact that if they could come to some reasonable estimate of what that was going to be, they might be coming back with an agreement. And if I'm wrong or assuming something in that discussion, I'd be happy to have it corrected. But Commissioner Heiberg is absolutely right, because if we don't do something now, it's going to come back and come back and come back all the time. And at this point, there's no reason to delay this conversation. I think if you have till October 6th to make this happen, I think it'll hopefully happen.
And thank you. And I believe your assessment of the issue is correct. We've got the language contained in the waiver of protest of annexation regarding utilities and whatnot that I think needs to be shored up and tightened up. And then Daniel, Mr. Witty, needs to decide, quite frankly, if the city is going to maintain they want the entire five acres waived, whether or not he's going to agree to do that. Because initially, he just wanted to waive on the RR1. And I think that it's going to be resolved before that October date, so I'm not going to ask you to come down here again, you know, for no reason. I know that you've all got other things to do and busy schedules.
So any other questions for Mr. Billion? The motion and a second to defer till October 6th on the county side. Additional comments?
And it is a substitute motion, just as a point of order at this point.
Yep, substitute motion. So we have to vote on the substitute motion. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now the original motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So the county has deferred it until October 6th. Now we need a motion and a second on the Del Rapids side.
Motion to defer until October 6th.
And a motion and a second to defer on the Del Rapids side. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, I would ask for an adjournment on the county side. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. In Del Rapids, a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion and a second to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. With that, we will reconvene into regular business on Minnehaha County. Item number 10 is a presentation of the Minnehaha County Rural Site Assessment by the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and SEACOG, Southeast Council of Governments. Good morning.
Good morning.
If you would just give me your name and business address or an address for our records, that would be great.
Okay. My name is Kristen Bennett. I work at Southeastern Council of Governments located at 500 Northwestern Avenue, Suite 100, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 5671.
Madam Chair, you're very soft spoken, if you wouldn't mind just -- thank you.
Yes. Make sure you speak into the microphone. Be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Good morning. Again, my name is Kristen Bennett. I'm here from the Southeastern Council of Governments to present the results of the rural site assessment analysis that we did. I would also like to take a quick moment to introduce the people -- other people from SEACOG and the state here with me. We have Lynn Keller Forbes, our executive director, Toby Brown, a planner, and we also have Mr. Paul Cosbath, the Director of Agricultural Development for the South Dakota Department of Agriculture. So the Rural Development Site Analysis is a project that was developed with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and the First District Association of Local Governments. And we were contracted with First District to do the analysis for Minnehaha County. A little history on the project, date-wise. On October 14th, 2014, staff from SEACOG and the state came and met with the county commission, presented the project, and asked for a resolution for the county to participate in the study, which you passed. So in spring of 2015 -- So in spring of 2015, we requested information and performed the primary analysis. In summer of 2015, the methodology and report was reviewed by the First District Association of Local Governments. And today, August 25th, 2015, I'm here to present the findings. A little bit of the hope of the outcomes from this. The first and foremost outcome is to determine locations that would accommodate concentrated animal feeding operations, or CAFO development, or agriculturally related commercial or industrial development, AID development. We hope to work with county, state, utility providers, and landowners to utilize data. This could lead to additional studies of cost benefit analyses or Phase 1 environmentals. It can also help with sound planning by assisting in comprehensive plan and zoning updates and potentially minimize landowner conflicts in the future. Moving on to the study. So we had two parts. The first was a CAFO site assessment. The second was an AID. I'm going to start with the CAFO. So here you can see a list of the CAFO criteria that this study used. We looked at access to county and state road network, proximity to three-phase electric power supply, proximity to rural water, capacity of that rural water system, the location of the shallow aquifer, making certain sites would be placed on a buildable parcel of at least 40 acres. We referred to existing zoning districts and land use plans. And we considered proximity of rural residences and communities based on county CAFO zoning setback requirements. This study had setbacks that were based on a 3,000-head dairy operation, which requires a site to be setback from a city 22,440 feet and 12,540 feet from any dwelling, church, school, or business, and also a 5,000-head swine operation, which would be setback from a city 13,200 feet and 6,380 feet from any dwelling, church, school, or business. Moving on, there was a hierarchy that was performed and completed for any site that was chosen based on this study criteria. Any site that made it through the criteria was deemed to be at least good. However, if it exceeded base criteria, it could be considered better or best based on additional criteria in this chart. For Minnehaha County, this study, the criteria used, and it found zero applicable sites in Minnehaha County. And just a quick move through the criteria that I mentioned. We started with setbacks where we came with zero sites. We moved into considering areas over floodplain, areas over the aquifer protection district or the shallow aquifer, sites within two miles of three-phase electric power, sites within one mile of a hard surface road, and sites within two miles of the shallow aquifer or within one mile of a rural water service line. That would be for water service. Again, our final map shows that there were zero sites available according to this study for CAFO development. The second portion of this study was to at AID sites, again, agriculturally related industrial commercial development. The AID criteria considered access to county and state road network, proximity to three-phase electric supply, proximity to rural water, capacity of that rural water system, location of the shallow aquifer, ensuring site would be on a buildable parcel of at least 40 acres. Looked at existing zoning districts and land use plans. We considered proximity to communities and proximity to rail. We also had two classes in here, a high-water AID, which would require 410,000 gallons of water per day, or a low-water AID, which would be 30,000 gallons of water per day. Again, we had a hierarchy for the AID developments, where any site that made it through the base criteria was considered to be at least good. However, if it exceeded base criteria, it could then be bumped up to a better or a best, as determined by the chart. In Minnehaha County, we found that there were zero high-water AID development sites. However, low-water AID development sites, we found a total of 182, with 181 of them being good and one being better. Moving through the AID sites, we found, starting out with sites within one mile of rail, one mile of community, or within a future rural service area as determined by the county comprehensive plan. We found 1,112 sites as a base. Moved on to remove sites that fell over a floodplain, which brought it to 890. The aquifer protection district brought us down to 231. Sites within two miles of a three-phase electricity supply was 216. And then we considered, those same 216 carried through to be within one mile of a county or state hard surface road network. And sites within one mile of rural water service or two miles of shallow aquifer or water supply brought us our total of 182. Here's our final map for the high-water CAFO. Again, we found zero sites. That was due to the fact that the rural water system in Minnehaha County stated they did not believe they had the capacity to serve 410,000 gallons per day at this time. There we go. Whereas the low-water AID, again, we see the distribution of our 181 sites for good and one for better. As a wrap-up of the initial findings, CAFO, there were zero sites for AID. You have 1,112 in proximity to rail or a city, 890 after taking out floodplain, 231 after removing aquifer protection area, 216 that are close to power supply, the same 216 with access to roads, and 182 with access to water. And as a final number. At this point in time, I would like to invite up Mr. Paul Cosbath, the Director of Agricultural Development for the South Dakota Department of Agriculture, for some closing comments.
Thank you. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commission, once again, Paul Cosbath, Director of Ag Development for South Dakota, based out of Pier 523 East Capitol Avenue, but actually now residing with my family in Sioux Falls. So drive was much quicker this morning than it was last time we met. As far as the results go, our hope would be from this point, this is something that you find useful. Congratulations on getting this far in the process and having now a report to look at and use as you see fit. Happy to try to answer any questions the commission may have as we proceed. A little bit about what we usually would see as the next steps, and we'd look for the commission's guidance on this. Generally, what we do from here is send a letter out to the landowners that were identified. And it's a confidential letter, simply letting them know of the study, the criteria of the sites, very briefly mentioning what the study's about, and that it was requested by the commission. They had a site that was identified, and we asked them simply if they're interested in learning more, reach out to us. We'd gladly get together with them in a public-type meeting with a group of landowners if they're interested, one-on-one, whatever works with the landowners. So what has always been commission-driven to this point, what we try to do now is kind of turn it over to the landowners and let them drive what happens next. You know, we found some sites, you know, CAFO sites, just based on the criteria that are laid out in here, quite a few of the AID sites, but none of those sites really exist unless the landowners are interested. So we would propose reaching out to them with the letter. Another thing that we would like to do is work with a person of the commission's choosing. Typically, that's the P&amp;Z director or local economic development folks, maybe Nick Foshein with Minnehaha Economic Development, however you see fit. We'd like to share the results with that person as the local contact, so this isn't state-driven as far as now, how we move forward with landowners. We'd like to continue to work closely with the commission. But again, I would look to the commission for your guidance on how you would like us to proceed and what those next steps are. So with that, congratulations again. I would be happy to try to answer any questions on the study or the results if there would be any.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Burr?
Mr. Cosbath, I don't feel like I deserve congratulations when we have zero locations for CAFOs. It's interesting that we've permitted, I think, at least four this year that have found a knuck someplace. But is that perhaps because they have the permission or waivers from their neighbors? Is that the biggest issue there?
Yes, Commissioner. I would say that's exactly the case. You know, so the sites we look at, we rule out anything on more than a mile of township road. So if you're just over a mile, there may very well be a site that would show up. But in most cases, with the setbacks and the population here in the county, I think the sites that would be out there are either going to require a waiver from neighbors or it might be a site that the landowner has that their house is the one that falls within the setbacks, and in which case then, if they want to develop that parcel, that'd be an non-issue.
Commissioner Burr?
So does the Department of Agriculture have any programs that would encourage people to upgrade existing operations to become better stewards of the land or better at controlling their discharge of waste, et cetera? Are there programs to encourage riparian barriers and that kind of thing? Or?
Yes, Commissioner. I would say our financing programs that we have, whether it be for new development or expansion, would work with all of those criteria. Let's say there's a smaller operation that's looking to upgrade slightly. Maybe it's a small dairy looking to add a few cows or whatever the case may be. Really, our finance programs at the department are geared more towards those folks than what they are, say, the larger operations. You know, in the study, we use our 3,000-head dairy as an example for the larger CAFO side. That's only because we're trying to put a universal criteria the best we can so that county by county, we're doing the same study, which obviously adds a challenge for trying to identify sites. But as far as our programs go, they are geared more towards the smaller producers. They have lending limits on them that usually for large facility wouldn't work all that well. And then there's also federal programs out there that help a lot. I believe more on what you're referring to on the environmental piece specifically.
Okay. Additional questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I guess I'm still confused on the CAFO. This, excuse me, study was done to help us, right?
Mm-hmm.
And yet, what you show is zero CAFOs, which doesn't help a lot.
Right.
What, I mean, why didn't you identify sites that would work? Are there, are you basically saying that CAFOs in this county are not a good idea?
Well, what I would say, Commissioner, is from the study, using the current setbacks and all of the criteria that were laid out, and again, using a 3,000-head dairy as the criteria, on the larger end, with the graduated setbacks that the county has, it's saying that right now, there's no sites identified that don't run into setback issues. I would say was probably the largest case with the population base. It wouldn't suggest that there are no good sites. It's just saying with this criteria, for the starting point of the conversation, no sites were identified that meet all the criteria. What we hope that the commission can do, and a lot of commissions have had the opportunity to do this, and this is really more what the sites or the study's about, other than the number of sites we can identify. It's being able to use the work now. CECOG has the GIS work all done, the layers are there. Now, if the commission would like, can go back to CECOG and work with them to change criteria. You know, maybe the setbacks get tweaked a little just to see, does that show up any sites or whatever the criteria may be, so that you can see if you feel that there should be some CAFO sites that may be otherwise missed. Now the groundwork has been laid to go out and do some of that additional work. So I definitely wouldn't suggest that there are no good sites. There are just no sites that match the criteria based on the current structure.
If I'm, I guess I'm, for instance, the automated dairy operations, I don't know how many there are in the county, but to me, that appears to be the future of agriculture, that, you know, so you don't have to be on-site 24/7 and everything else. Wouldn't it be better for us to know those areas? Obviously, you don't want a CAFO within, of course, Sioux Falls is going to, even in 25 years, Sioux Falls will be, but there are areas on the perimeter probably of the county that would be excellent sites, I would think. Are you saying we're going to have to change our criteria to meet this thing or to get any useful information out of it?
I definitely wouldn't suggest that you need to or should change your zoning or your setbacks criteria. I mean, that's obviously a local decision. We don't try to suggest one way or another how that should be. We just look at, as it sits today, one thing that we would be happy to do, you know, once again, say, on the larger CAFO, we're looking at 3,000-head dairy, and that setback was, I think, a little over two miles. We'd be happy to work with CECOG and look at what a 700-head look like for a setback. That would definitely change, I would think, with your graduated setbacks, what that criteria is or whatever the number may be. And that goes back to my earlier comment of the ability now with the groundwork laid to make some of those tweaks within their system. And I don't want to speak for CECOG too much. Maybe Toby could come up and answer that a little better. But now being able to go in and, as I understand, my limited understanding of GIS, some pretty simple and quick tweaks they could make to look at what a different scenarios look like, if it's a different size or whatever the case may be. So we hope it's helpful in that regard to use as you see fit, as you think about where does the county want to go. And that's our goal with the study, is to kind of help you get an idea of how does it look today as you plan the future of the county out.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, I don't think it rules out CAFOs. It's just when you look at their specific criteria, which, somebody comes in here, they may have different criteria as far as farther off of a main road or something, so it doesn't eliminate them. And if you look at smaller sizes, maybe if they did 2,500 or whatever, it's just the criteria that they used doesn't match up. And so there's probably, there's still possibilities out there, it's just under their criteria.
I still struggle to see how this helps us, but thank you.
Commissioner Bennega?
Paul, can you tell me, was this study done before the regional floodplain map was done just recently, or was it done after that?
I would ask Toby and CECOG. I'm not sure when that map came out.
Well, it's still in limbo, so to speak. It's still in discussion, but when they made their presentation, they expanded that floodplain significantly through FEMA, and I'm wondering if these findings are still current, frankly.
The floodplain map that we used was the official one through FEMA. It's the same one that the county had posted on their, as their floodplain map. So whatever was in place in the spring of this year, that's what was used.
Scott, can you tell us what that is?
Sure. The map layer that they used is the old map layer, which is the current map layer. I don't want to say old, because the new maps won't be adopted till next year. And I think this is very, very good information, but I think we all need to remember that a 3,000-head dairy is really large. And we typically, when we get, if you think back on the conditionally permits that we've gotten in the last year for dairies or CAFOs, most people start, you know, they'll start out at that 750 to 1,000, and then, you know, they'll build up. We have very few dairies or CAFOs that reach that limit of 3,000-head. And I'm not sure if they were talking about animal units or whether they were talking about 300 dairy cows, because 300 dairy cows is over 4,000 animal units, which that would push that buffer out to two miles, and that's very difficult. But we don't get a lot of those really, really huge dairies or CAFOs that come in.
My next question would be then, if this is, quote, "the old floodplain map" with the new assumed floodplain map coming out, how is that going to change this from 890? Is it going to go up to what?
Well, you know, a lot of that is not, it's not going to change relatively a great deal, because if you recall, that floodplain really only expands up to about Renner. And there was very little expansion along Skunk Creek, and there was no expansion along our other, you know, like Split Rock Creek or some of our other minor tributaries in our drainage basins around Sioux Falls. The other thing is, we don't allow CAFOs. drainage basins around Sioux Falls. The other thing is, we don't allow CAFOs right now, I don't believe, within the joint jurisdiction of Sioux Falls. So, and a lot of that property up to the north, where that floodplain did expand, is within the joint jurisdiction that we have with the city of Sioux Falls.
Okay. Additional questions? Commissioner Burr?
So, I guess I'm wondering if some of these criteria could be, like, lifted to study what, you know, if you took away the issue of power supply, you know, that might open up some areas, and potentially, power supply can be built. Clearly, you can't really change the floodplain. Access to roads, access to water, those things can be changed. So is this study in a position where we could, like, take off the power supply criteria, and then see how many sites emerge?
I would say that's a perfect use of it, Commissioner. Now that that groundwork is laid with CCOG and their GIS, they can remove layers, add layers, as Kristin kind of walked through, you know, as they kept adding layers, aquifer, roads, and so on. Those changes now can be made to what's there. And that's where we hope this is useful. It takes this a starting point for criteria, and number of animal units can be reduced, or setbacks reduced, or removal of the road data. One mile of township road limit could be extended to two. And that may very well show some sites.
Okay. Now, Paul, what I'm hearing from you is you would like a little direction from the Commission, as far as, do we need to give you permission to send letters out to these landowners? Is that what you're looking for?
We would want to make sure you're comfortable. You know, just like we didn't want to do the study unless the Commission had asked us to. We don't want to go start the outreach and the conversation with local landowners, you know, without your blessing as well. And then, as I mentioned, we'd like to be able to work with a local contact person on the Commission's behalf, whoever that may be that you're comfortable with. And as I mentioned, typically, counties have been going economic development, folks that are very involved with the development side, local P&amp;Z directors, or whatever works best for the Commission, and in some cases, a Commissioner as well.
I would suggest, as far as appointing a Commissioner in liaison, that maybe we should have some discussion, you know, and see what our options are, as far as who would be the best ones, before we actually make a motion on that. But I'm wondering if there'd be a motion on allowing them to send letters out to landowners.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow them to contact landowners. Commissioner Burr? Commissioner Bennigan?
I'm curious, what, because you've got different criteria here. If you send letters out, are you just sending it out to the 182 that hit every mark?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We would just send it to the landowners that were identified with the criteria that was used. And I would just mention again, that if any point, the Commission wants to look at the study in a different way, we're happy to continue to work with you on trying to do that. That, again, is the point of this, is trying to create a starting point, so that we can go from there, wherever the Commission would like, on looking at other pieces.
Commissioner Burr?
Thank you. So will our planning department be able to access and use this, you know, through RGIS, through whatever, to help with economic development, and add a layer, take a layer? I mean, potentially, an applicant might be willing to pave a mile of road or something, et cetera. So will we have that in-house, or are we going to have to get it from peer?
That would be our intent. When I'm talking, kind of the local contact person, is to have that person be the one that has the access to the info. And if you've already got the GIS systems in place, which I'm guessing you do, then that would work great, to have them work with CCOG on having that access, and being able to continue to build on what's simply been the groundwork that's been laid now.
We could have made criteria, 100 cows in a half a mile, and would have just put a whole lot of things on the map. So it's just kind of where the criteria is, and then just moving it about.
And we'd be happy to look at that, now that the base has been set there. Pretty easy to do.
So we have a motion and a second, just to notify the landowners of this particular study. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I will have staff just collect some information and some ideas from different Commissioners, and who might be interested in serving on it, and who might be a good outside agency to put on this. And then we can bring it back and do it under old business or something, so.
That sounds great. And I'll make sure my contact information is provided to staff to kind of let us know how the Commission collectively feels. And we're happy to come back anytime and discuss it further, or make tweaks, and look at some more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will go on to item number 11, which is to consider a motion to appoint Ken E. McFarland to the Minnehaw County Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Robert Wilson.
Any questions, Robert Wilson, in the Commission's office? And we do have a number of properties that appear, that they will be likely candidates to be on the surplus property auction later this fall. And as part of that process, the first step in the process is we need the appraisal board to be appointed, and go out and review the properties, and make an appraisal as a beginning point for moving forward on that. We have two of the three members returning that have been part of this process for a number of years, Dick Calamine and Connie Malone. Third individual who used to participate in this, and participated in the most recent review just a couple of months ago, has informed our office that they are not able to do so because of health reasons. And so, we needed another individual to serve on this. This board, Mr. McFarland, has agreed to share some of his time with us, and be part of this process. If you do appoint this board as is outlined in your briefing material, this will be, they will plan to go out tomorrow and review these properties. And again, that will be the first step in the process for preparing the tax deduction that will come up later in the fall. And we are trying to maintain a schedule on this, so that we can have all of the information and the properties squared away, and the taxes in place, and solidified by the November 1 timeframe for the Auditor's Office. So that's a little bit of the background, and the reason that we bring this to you at this time.
Any questions for Robert? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Ken McFarland for the Minnehaw County Surplus Property Appraisal Board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. Item number 12 is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended a Makita meeting last week in Baltic, and we had a report from the Sioux Falls area here about the industrial park up by McCrossan's and stuff. And it seems like one of our biggest issues is workforce development. People are not able to find the employees that they need. In fact, on a personal issue, I know of a person who's trying to hire a secretary for $20 an hour, can't find anyone that has got the, what they need, at $20 an hour. Anyway, to take another step here, I went to the East Dakota Water District in Brookings, and they've been doing studies on water in the Big Sioux River. And they've been taking nitrate levels from basically Sistin to Sioux City. And some of them, they take every other week, some of them, they take constantly, and some of they take every week. In any case, the two worst areas were not related really to ag. They were just south of Watertown, and just on the loop of the river between Sioux Falls and Brandon. Those were the, had the highest nitrate levels. Now, they had it graduated from blue to dark green, to green, to yellow, to orange, to red. We had nothing that was red. And the Raccoon River in Des Moines is red all the way. And that's where there's some issues with the city of Des Moines suing everybody upstream from them. That's not to say that groundwater, which is different than surface water, doesn't have issues. And so, well water, you know, I guess is more consistent when they test it, and has higher levels. But it's interesting that the Big Sioux River, for, as far as nitrates are concerned, which are associated with tile drainage, are doing very well. Obviously, there's issues with bacteria and that kind of material. But we hope to have, I hope to have Jay Gilbertson come down and give us a PowerPoint on this at some time in the future. And finally, we had planning last night, and it was not too bad. We did approve a couple of towers, one by a church, and one on acreage north of Brandon. Some 300 feet tall, was it? Yeah. The one over by the church, we went with the city's concern and made it a monopole instead of a latticed tower, which is a little more expensive. Anyway, that's my liaison report.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
I have a couple of things to report on. And that was this last week, a group of us went up to peer for the summer study. We had Auditor Litz and Register of Deeds Risti, Carol Muller, Commissioner Kelly, and myself all went up for the summer study and testified. Elected officials were testifying about the deficits in their departments. It was extremely interesting to listen to sheriffs and auditors and registers of deeds from other counties that deal with issues that we don't even think about. We've got problems, but they have also significant problems. The legislative chairperson used an example, I think that well describes our problems. And she said, "The state is the hand, but the county governments are the fingers that run the state." And I thought, "That's very good. You chop off those fingers, and we don't have much of anything." The smaller counties are faced with a lot of challenges that really don't have to do with property taxes, but more that they aren't receiving property taxes from tribal lands. They're seeing a decreased revenue from federal governments, for examples, like the forest and the grasslands payments. And some of them hardly have any taxpayers in their county for property taxes. And we covered, Carol and I gave a presentation that I think went very well. We talked about the opt-outs, and you've probably heard this from Carol, that 20% of our general fund is now covered by opt-outs. We also compared Minnehaw County's growth from 2010 to 2016. We've grown 13%. And the city of Sioux Falls has grown 40% in the same timeframe. I think that we did make some impact. They, I think, mostly overall, they listened very attentively to what we had to say, and they had good questions. So we'll see where it goes. They meet again in September. We had a real good presentation from, about revenues from the state. And so, Carol's office has copied all the books that we had, and put them in our mailboxes, which now are at the end of the hall, if you didn't know where our mailboxes were moved to. It's very interesting. The presentation was also very good. If you'd happen to want to listen to the presentation, you can catch it. There's a website that you can listen to it. And I think it's worth your time, if you've got about, I think it was about 45 minutes that they spoke. It was very, very good. The other one I was going to mention just quickly was that I met last night with a group of library people, some state library people, local library people, and a gal who is the senior program officer for state libraries in Washington, DC. She's just here in the state of South Dakota, traveling around to different rural libraries and city municipality libraries to make sure that they are adhering to guidelines and spending federal money appropriately. She highly praised the Siouxland libraries, and the work that they have done, and suggested that we maybe consider applying for an award that is given out to about 10 libraries nationwide yearly. She said, "We fit a lot of the criteria," and that we should look at it. She was very impressed with what we have done here, with the tax money we have, and that we run a library that is actually continuing to grow and not suffering financially. It was very interesting. Commissioner Kelly, I don't know if you want, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, did you want to say anything at all about the meeting we had with Commissioners regarding our proposals to our caucus?
Well, I, on the resolutions, and frankly, I was hoping that they would give us some sort of review of what we did. And I don't remember what we did on all those resolutions. You and Carol were both there, and maybe, I sense sometimes that, you know, you do all this, and we're going to have one more resolutions meeting, I think, before the convention. They just kind of hang out there in nowhere land. And it's a little frustrating sometimes. There is a lot more talk, both amongst legislators and Commissioners, about raising the sale, or getting a sales tax for the counties. I think, because the city is using, I mean, the city's a big part of our county. The city is also the one that feeds us all the people to the jail, and to the human services. And so, I think if there's anything they should do, I would hope that would be countywide, not just outside the municipalities. In some counties, there are no municipalities, so it's a little bigger deal. But they don't have any revenues to speak of, anyway. There are proposals also to do a 1% or 1/2% sales tax outside the municipalities. I don't know what the, I never did look at the numbers of what that would calculate for us, but it's not significant. Other than that, I think we got the legislators' attention as far as what our problems are. I think, it's unfortunate, I think the Governor's Office sent Jim Seward down to correct alleged misinformation that we had received from the guys that got boots underground, that's sheriffs. And they're so defensive of that Senate Bill 70, that it makes it a little difficult. There's a bias there, I think, on the part of the Legislature, and obviously, on part of the second floor, towards Senate Bill 70. And I'm not sure they really want to hear the problems that are beginning to do. I think we've had less problem here, probably, than some of these counties have had.
Really bad.
So we'll, and I guess I'm kind of waiting to see if they send me out, or I'll request a report on what we did on resolutions. Have you got it there, Carol?
Mm-hmm.
Well, good. You can be my memory.
I went and grabbed my notes real quickly. Yes, Resolution 1, county construction or replacement of bridges and culverts on township secondary roads. Reimbursement of county, that was a yes. Resolution, the second one, implementation of a county sales tax is moving forward to the full. Amend date of annual conference of Commissioners and Director of Equalizations was a yes.
Carol, that was the one that was outside the municipalities, wasn't it? Or was it clear on that?
Wasn't clear.
Okay.
Was not clear on that one. That was, the second one was permissive language, that would be the same as the cities. Oh, yes, you're correct. Outside of city, sales if collected. The increase the fee and limit number of historical plates for vehicles and motorcycles, that was tabled. To change the minimum population of incorporating municipalities and defining the residence was a yes. Amend the property tax, limitation of 3% or CPI, whichever is greater, was tabled. To provide for the redistribution of money in the alcoholic beverage fund was a yes, and that one came from the Minnehaw County Commission. To provide for 10% increase in the sales tax on alcoholic beverages, again, for Minnehaw County, that one was tabled. Increasing the sheriff's fees was a yes, and that was for civil, for serving civil papers. And authorization of a county sales tax to fund the construction and renovation of county courthouses and jails, and regional jails, was presented by Cottington County, and that one was a yes. And raising bid limits was a yes.
And...
Thank you.
As Dick said, this is, they're not done. This is what we got done this meeting, and they will be revisiting these again, before they actually take them to the whole convention for consideration. I think it was good discussion, and like Dick said, there is more discussion out there about trying to get a penny sales tax, or a half penny sales tax for counties. Lot of different ideas out of there. That doesn't work for smaller counties, and so what they'd have to do is give a percentage, or a dollar amount to small counties who don't have any property taxes. That would come right off the top. Those are discussions to go forward.
I think that process is flawed, because we, this was our first meeting of resolutions, and we're in the middle of August already. Then we, then the September convention is where we decide and put to the membership what we're going to do for resolutions in the coming legislature. Well, something like a sales tax is going to take one or two, maybe three years to get going. But long-term, it's probably one of our only solutions. And I don't know why we don't begin early and begin building those alliances and stuff. I suggested to the board last year, and currently, there wasn't much interest in it. But really, it's a flawed system, because we're going in, we're going in probably in October and starting to, you know, starting to work up on what were the bills and stuff. They throw a lot of it back. If you're a county... If, if you're a county that sponsors a bill, you've got to find a sponsor, and you're going to take care of having LRC write the bill. And state association, you know, is interesting. But I, I just think that sometime they're going to have to look at it and see where we can start this process much earlier and concentrate on, on some key areas. You know, the Cottington County bill was obviously a local bill, although many of the counties have big problems with their, with their antiquated courthouses. But Cottington got beat so bad on their, on their.
Jail.
On the referral on their deal, and I think there were a lot of reasons for that. So Rapid City, Pennington last year got a spiff from the state, I believe. So we're constantly fighting an uphill battle up there, but I guess just keep fighting.
Any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? That's all right. Sorry, Scott.
I wanted to share some good news with you. Our comprehensive plan, the Envision 2035 Plan, was awarded the Rural Innovation Award by the American Planning Association, the West Central Chapter, which is 12, a 12-state region, the upper Midwest and, and out to the inner Mountain West. And this is the only award that they give out for, for the year for, for comprehensive planning process, and our plan was chosen as the innovative rural plan in that 12-state region. So I'm very pleased and, and happy that we were awarded this plan, or this award was given to our plan, and I thought I'd share that with you. It was presented last week in Laramie, Wyoming, at the West Central Chapter of, of the American Planning Association. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but it's just some rewards for all the hard work that our office did, and primarily Kevin and David. They, as you know, we had worked on the plan for a while, and then there were some staffing changes that sort of was set aside for a little bit while we got up to speed again on training planners. And once we were able to get going back on the plan, we were able to finish it up in about a year. And we, as you know, I think one of the things that the awards people looked at was the public participation that we had and the number of open houses that we had. We spent time at the fair two weekends, an entire week. That all came into play on why they really appreciated the, the plan and, and were very pleased with it, and gave us the award.
I'd like to say, David, thank you very much, and Kevin and Scott, you guys have a small office, and they did really rise the occasion. I know there was, when I first came on and it wasn't done, and there was talk about how much it was going to cost and back and forth, and we had a lot of issues going into it, and when we finally just said, just do it, planning zones, planning and zoning raised the occasion, and they did a very nice job and have, I mean, it really has been good.
Yep.
It looks good for Minnehaw County that we have such a nice plan and, and are recognized. And so I thank all of you in your office for what you did to, it's nice to be recognized.
Thank you. And the plan is online, so the public can go look at it. It, it's still available for anyone to download, look at, use. It's very user-friendly, and it's got some very useful information. The graphics are awesome. That was one of the things that we really strove to make it look cutting-edge and up to date. So it should be a plan that will suit and benefit the county for the next 15, 10, 15 years. And then at that point, we'll have to start looking at doing another one, but that's down the road. Thanks.
We'll all be gone.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I'd just make a comment that planning is getting more and more complicated, you know, as we contend with the city of Sioux Falls getting larger and, and development in our rural areas and the technologies of CAFOs, et cetera. The work that this department has to do is, you know, I mean, we had two radio towers last night. I mean, it's getting very complicated, and again, would commend Scott and his team.
Thank you.
Is there any old business? Some old business?
Probably old, probably more new business, but just as a reminder, it is September next week, and that means you're back in the budget cycle. So budget hearing is next, next Tuesday, just as a reminder, because I want you all starting to think in that direction again after a month reprieve. And you've all gotten the update that we are moving the building committee from September 1 to September 8. So that'll, it's just being delayed a week, so we have a lot of people gone the 1st of September, so that will move back a week. And as you're looking towards the budget, you have to have that budget adopted by September 29. I think the chairman has discussed a little bit about moving that up to September 22. And as a reminder, the week before that, is that the 17th? You will not be meeting, because several of you will be in peer. So the 17th, you won't be meeting, and either adopt, neither the 22nd or the 29th.
I think we could discuss that just a minute. What would be the commission's pleasure? I will be gone the 29th. You can adopt it without me, or you can do it the week before, and I will be here. And I don't have any heartburn either way about it, so what would be your pleasure for adopting the final?
Madam Chair, I have no worries. We can do it on the 29th.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think we just do it on the 22nd and move forward.
I mean, we'll be done with it. We're, we're pretty much finished.
I'll make a motion to do the 22nd.
Okay. Second.
Motion and a second to do it on the 22nd, to have our final budget hearing, to adopt the budget, which I don't really think there'll be any much additional information at that point. I think we will be done with what our budget is.
No, we're meeting internally later this week to review before next Tuesday's meeting, and yeah, the things that are coming out are probably pretty equal to the things that are coming in, so.
If, if there are any changes, I would hope we'd kind of get a heads up early so that we could.
Be thinking about it.
And we'll make you, we'll apprise you of that for next week's budget meeting.
Okay.
Motion and second.
Oh, I have a motion and a second to move it, sorry, to the 22nd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Burr. I would look for a motion for executive session for personnel and legislative.
So moved.
Litigation, excuse me, and for litigation. I wrote it somewhere. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same.
I seconded. It was through E.S.P.
Motion passes unanimously.